I call this Altoona City Council meeting to order Monday, August 8th at 6:00 PM. We'll now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by the Boy Scout Troop 117. Boys, if you want to come up here and just lead us in pledge?
All right.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Thank you.
Good job, fellas.
Thank you.
Linda, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterbaum.
Here.
Councilman Carper. Councilman Carper. Councilman Ellis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly is on his way. Mayor Pacifico.
Here.
Okay, we have, uh, our first presentation this evening is the 2021 audit, and joining us is Dan Bradley from Young Oaks &amp; Brown. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor and Council for their continued confidence in our firm. We greatly appreciate the relationship we have with the city. I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Strom and the remaining staff here at the city, but most especially Bessie Mosey for all the courtesies and cooperation they extended to us during the course of the audit. It was very much appreciated. With that said, I'd just like to walk you through the audit report. Just take a few minutes of your time. First of all, the opinion is on pages one through four, and the city earned what we call an unqualified or an unmodified or a clean opinion for the year ended December 31, 2021. Pages five through 12 were the MDNA, Management's Discussion and Analysis. That was put together by city management. And then we move on to the financial statement numbers. On page 13, we have our statement of net position. If we could look at the first column, the governmental activities, you'll notice that the total net position at the bottom of the page is a positive $335,118,000. If you look at the details of that, however, you'll notice that the net investment in capital assets, that's the equipment, the streets, the bridges, et cetera, owned by the city of Altoona, less any debt related to that, those capital assets. That's about $366 million. As a result, the unassigned or unrestricted portion of net position is actually a deficit of about $36 million. I'm sorry, $38 million. Now, at first glance, that looks to be a real issue or real concern, but again, this is true of most governmental entities in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania who have a net pension liability or an OPEP liability. A lot of what I'm going to talk about in the next five to ten minutes with you folks is going to deal with those two major items. They're going to overshadow a lot of other things in your financial statements, the net pension liability and the other post-employment liabilities. Those two numbers total about $57 million, and that's what's really driving the net position into a deficit. If you look at page 14, which is the, uh, statement of activities, and if we look at the governmental column one more time, the third number from the bottom, you'll see that we actually had a positive improvement to net position in the year of about $35 million. You'll also notice about two numbers above that. That primarily resulted from an inter-entity transfer of over $38 million, which really contributed toward us having a positive change in net position for the year. Going on to page 15, we have our balance sheet. This is only current assets and current liabilities of the city. If we look at the general fund, you'll notice the second number from the bottom, the total fund balance for the general fund is about $11,391,000. If you look at the total column, the second number from the bottom, the overall fund balance for the city is $32,711,000. What we try to do on the next page is to reconcile that number, the $32,712,000, to the net position that we talked about just a few minutes ago, the $335 million. You can see on page 16, all of the items that go into that reconciliation, the capital assets owned by the city of Altoona, all the long-term debt that the city owes at this point in time. There's also some property tax receivable, but that's how we get from the one number which looks at current assets and current liabilities to the number on page 13, which showed all assets and liabilities of the city. Going over to page 17, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, I'd like to focus on the general fund. The first column, you'll notice the third number from the bottom. We actually had a positive increase in fund balance for the year of about $1,976,000. If we look at the total column, overall, the city's fund balance increased by about $121,000. So, once again, on page 18, we reconcile that $121,000 to that change in net position that I mentioned just a few minutes ago, the $34,675,000. And you can see here we have our capital outlays, which are not considered to be an expense on the, uh, statement of activities, but they were on the prior page, the statement of revenues and expenditures. And so that's an add-back of about $29 million. You'll also notice toward the middle of the page, we have our long-term debt, the repayment of the debt and also the new debt that was issued. And then the last two items deal with pension and also net pension liability and other post-employment benefit liabilities. Again, that's how all those things work out, and that's why you have two statements here, a balance sheet and then a statement of net position. But they both try to represent the same thing, but they just have different focuses. One is a more current focus, the other is a long-term focus, if you will. Pages 19 and 20, this shows details regarding the city's three pension plans. You can see at the end of the year, the three pensions plans had total net position of about $117 million. Looking at page 20, the third number from the bottom, we actually had an increase in net position for those three pension plans of about $9,391,000. The biggest part of the report for the city of Altoona is actually the notes to the financial statement. That's pages 21 through 91. So, it's a total of 71 pages. Like I mentioned before, a lot of this is dominated by the net pension liability and the other post-employment benefits. Pages 42 through 75 deal with your net pension liabilities and also your other post-employment benefits. So, half of the notes to the financial statement deal with those two issues. We then go on to what we call the RSI, Required Supplementary Information, on pages 92 through 126. And those 35 pages also deal with those same two issues, your net pension liability and your other post-employment benefits. Again, I'm not going to go through any of those details with you folks, but again, if you ever have a question about it, please call the office and I'd be more than happy to talk to you about any questions you have about the audit report. But I do want to take a minute of your time to look at page 127. This is the budget actual comparison for the year. And if you look, uh, at the third number from the bottom in the final budget column, it shows that we actually had a balanced budget for the year. That is, we budgeted revenues to equal our expenditures. If you look at the actual column, you can see we actually had a good year in the fact that our revenues exceeded our expenditures by about $1,976,000. So, very, very good sign for the city. Uh, going on now to, uh, page 130, here we have some details regarding the numbers that make up your non-major governmental funds. There's a total page back on, there's a total column back on page, uh, 15 that gives a total for the non-major funds. That would be reflected as the last column that you see here on page 130. Also on page 17, the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance, there is a total for the non-major funds. That would be reflective of the numbers you see at the bottom of page 131 to the far right. Also, we have details of your three pension plans. These are provided on pages 132 and 133. A very important part of your report is always what we call the SEFO, or the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. This begins on page 134. It shows that last year, the city expended $4.4 million of federal financial assistance. We had to select certain programs to look at to satisfy the uniform guidance requirements. We're required to look at at least 40% of those expenditures. As you can see on page 135, we actually looked at 87% of those expenditures. And the good thing is you're going to see here in just a few minutes, there were no findings related to anything that we looked at as related to your, your single audit or your federal financial assistance. Pages 136 through pages 140 are your governmental auditing standards and also the uniform guidance reports on internal control and compliance. And the details of the issues that were noted are on page 142 through 143. There were only two findings this year for the city of Altoona. And again, compared to where the city was, again, just a few years ago, it's a very, very positive sign to have only two audit findings. And it's a tribute to Mayor and Council and also to Mr. Strom and all the employees of the city for the great work that they did. If there's any questions at all about the audit report, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time. Or again, please give me a call later on, once you have a chance to review it.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradley, thank you for another year of providing your firm's professionalism to the city. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr.
Okay, our next presentation-
This is the 2022 mid-year financial review. This slide shows how the budgeted revenues are broken down by percentages. In the upper right-hand corner, you can see the real estate revenue at 29%, which is our largest source of revenue. Right below that is the earned income tax at 14%. And below that, at 8%, are the Act 511 taxes. Moving to the upper left-hand corner is the charges for services at 19%, with the biggest component being the money that we receive from the water authority. This slide shows the breakdown of revenue received through mid-year 2022. As you can see to the right, the real estate revenue makes up about 61% of our revenues for 2022. The bottom left shows the earned income tax receipts through mid-year at 11%. And next to that shows the Act 511 revenues, the Act 511 tax revenues through mid-year at 9%. Moving to the upper left are the inter-fund transfers at 7%. As you can see from this graph, our 2022 mid-year revenues are down overall from 2021. The biggest reason for this is the large radio grant we received in 2021. Other revenues down slightly are the real estate taxes, the business license and permits and charges for services, and also the inter-fund transfers. This is a detailed comparison of revenue by category through mid-year 2022. They are provided in more detail in the spreadsheet that was included in your packet. This graph provides more detail of the revenues received year over year. The revenue highlights for the mid-year are the real estate tax receipts are down about $191,433. The earned income tax revenue is up through mid-year by about $142,322. Our gross receipt revenue, the business privilege tax, mercantile tax, and real estate transfer tax are slightly higher, mainly because of the real estate transfer taxes and the business privilege and mercantile taxes. Charges for services are down about $178,920, which is due to the timing of invoices for the gas restoration fees. Our local grant revenue through mid-year is down about $905,143, and that is because of the transfer in from the Act 205 and the CDBG reimbursement for wages. Federal grant receipts are much lower through mid-year because of the large grant received in 2021 to fund the countywide purchase of radios. This graph shows the 2022 budgeted expenditures by percentages in broad categories. They include public safety, which consists of police, fire, and codes at 57%, public works at 17%, and our debt service at 9%, and administration, which accounts for all other expenditures, is at 17%. This graph shows the 2022 mid-year expenditures broken down in the same broad categories. This chart shows the comparison of expenditures year over year for the broad categories mentioned before. Moving from left to right, public safety is lower mainly because of the radio grant expenses we had last year, and the arbitration award has not yet been calculated. For the fire department, public works is slightly lower, as is debt service, and administration is slightly higher. These are the actual expenditure comparisons year over year by department. And again, you can see more detail in the spreadsheet which was in your packet. This graph shows in more detail the expenditure comparisons year over year. This chart shows the overall revenue and expenditures and how they compare year over year. As you can see, our revenues are lower at mid-year 2022, as is our expenditures. Through mid-year 2022, our revenues exceeded our expenditures by about $578,000. Highlights for the mid-year expenditures are the expenditures for the chief executive and financial administration trailed the 2021 totals through mid-year due to staffing changes. Public safety-related expenditures are substantially lower than mid-year 2021, but they do not include the monetary effects of the arbitration award which was just received. With a significant reduction in staff that occurred last year, expenditures in the community development are lower in 2022. And due to refinancing of our existing city hall debt in 2021, payments toward debt service are notably lower than those through mid-year 2021. Last but not least, I would like to thank our finance staff for their work, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. On city real estate property tax, do we have a way to track escrow payments versus people who come in and maybe pay the real estate tax by writing a check, paying it out of pocket? I'm just trying to, I'm just curious what would maybe be, maybe to pinpoint what a cost driver would be, why, why we're a little bit behind year-to-date on those numbers compared to last year?
Um, I don't think we do. I don't know whether Burckheimer, because they would receive the largest taxes from the escrow companies.
Yeah, so, if we could get some input from Burckheimer, they might be able to break that out, but just as the information that we get from them typically, right now, we can't distinguish that.
Okay. All right. That was really the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Bessie. Uh, we had an executive session after our July city council meeting to discuss personnel. And prior to the meeting tonight, we had an executive session to discuss personnel. And with that, we will open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, you may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. And please keep your comments to under five minutes. Floor is now open.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, my name's Greg Donnelly, and I live at 719 Bryan Avenue in Altoona. That's the Garden Heights sections of Altoona. Uh, what I'm here to address tonight or present tonight is some ongoing issues we've had there for several years. The main issue we're dealing with is stray and feral cats. Now, this has been going on for about three years, and it continues to grow. And I'm just going to tell you this, I can't verify it, but I've been told that there are people bringing cats, taking them from shelters, uh, you know, Humane Society, whatever, and bringing them into the neighborhood and letting them loose so that they're not euthanized at the shelters. And our population continues to grow. And this has been going on, like I said, for about three years that I'm aware of. They've destroyed multiple property for me and for other residents of the neighborhood. Uh, my patio furniture was destroyed. They defecated and sprayed it and what have you. We had to throw it away and replace it. We now covered. Um, we had a carpet on the patio. It was also, you know, destroyed. Our flower beds are being dug up. They're killing all kinds of birds and rabbits and squirrels and what have you. Almost on a daily basis, I find dead animals in my yard and neighbors' yards and stuff where these cats are just, you know, killing stuff. Uh, that's the number-one issue. Number-two issue is we have, uh, a fair amount of, I'll call them abandoned or whatever, vehicles sitting around the neighborhood. No inspection on them, just sitting there. Some of them have been there since 2018. They're not moved. They're rusting, falling apart. They're just abandoned vehicles sitting around these different properties and stuff. Um, there is, uh, today, I currently, I just walked around a little section of the neighborhood, and there's six within a three-block area of my house. So, the oldest one being an Oldsmobile that hasn't been made since 2004. So, you know how old that car is and what have you. The other issue is grass and weeds not being cut or taken care of. And the main problem, I'll say, with that is Popeye's Chicken on Plank Road. Their weeds are three foot high. They did knock them down finally, but they're laying there. There's trash all through them. It's unsightly, you know, it's a, I'll call it a hazard or whatever. And also, they have a grease container in the back of their facility that they dump their old used grease and stuff into, and it runs out of that and runs down the alley towards the storm soars. Now, I've called, or somebody's called. I know my wife has called at least once and reported that, that, you know, you go up that alley and you're walking through old grease and it's running, like I said, towards the storm soars and stuff there in, in the city. Um, so, like I said, I'm here representing people from our neighborhood, and, you know, we'd like to ask city council to look into this and do something about these issues. You know, like it's, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't, it just shouldn't be happening. I'm going to say, I guess code enforcement is the one that should be taking care of this or whatever, but-
Sir, did you say that the abandoned vehicles don't have inspection stickers?
They have stickers on them, but like, one I looked at today is 2018. Uh, several other are 2019. They're just, like I said, sitting along the street or in the alley behind houses, whatever, and they're, they're just, like I said, old rusted-up, broken-down vehicles sitting around these different properties. And I don't know if there's more, because I didn't go the whole way through the neighborhood, but this is in a three-block area within my house.
Right. Thank you.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
My name is Kristy Johnson. I live at 108 East Third Avenue. Um, the reason I'm here tonight is, um, I'm requesting a four-way stop to be put at the intersection of First Street and Third Avenue. Um, it's the intersection where Lugetta's and Rule's Meat Market is. Um, with the two businesses being on the corners, it's very difficult to see beyond, um, like parked vehicles, um, patrons and delivery trucks. So, when you're trying to cross over first, a lot of the times, your vision's obstructed. Um, there's no stop sign between Fifth Avenue, like on First, between Fifth Avenue all the way up to Bell. And so, people are going more than 25 miles an hour, which is the posted speed limit. Um, I've never been in an accident, but I've seen, like, multiple people have to quickly stop because it's, it's very hard sometimes to get through there. Um, another problem that we have there is there's a lot of children in the neighborhood. And, um, while it, 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 there's a lot of kids that, you know, go through the stop signs and whatnot, and I know that's an issue of its own, but if it was a four-way stop, there, there would be, it'd be a little bit safer. There was a child that was just hit there on, uh, July 12th. She crossed through there on her bicycle. She was hit. And fortunately, she's okay. Um, but I believe if there was a stop sign on all four corners, then the driver would have been able to stop before hitting this child. Um, and I would just think that it would be safer for, in the future, other children, because like I said, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and you can blame the kids or blame the parents, but it doesn't really fix the problem. Um, and that intersection is also a school bus stop. And so, in the mornings, kids are, um, walking through that intersection as well. And with delivery trucks and things, it would just be safer on their way to the stop to have, um, people stopping on all sides. And I have, you know, if you think about, if you post, like, a police officer or something once in a while, I just find that it would be more random to find something happening. But if there was a four-way stop, I think it would be more effective and cost-effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nate, is there some type of requirement or study? Do we have to do something crazy for stop signs to be explored in places?
Yeah, a four-way stop requires certain warrants be met to be a legal four-way stop sign. So, our first step would be to pull some traffic history and see if there's a, uh, a history of accidents. I think you need five accidents in one year to-
So, you have to have, you have to have something bad happen first before you can put the stop signs there?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I frequent one of the businesses there, and I would agree. It's, that's definitely a hard intersection there. So, I, I agree with that.
If it, if it's an intersection where it would make sense to put four-way stop, we, we can do that.
We can?
Yeah.
We can override the state?
Oh, well, we did it before.
I think we should explore it.
I think the issue is you can't force it, right? Is that right?
Quasi. There, again, Nate, and I, I 100% agree. You know, there's several intersections in the city where if people just drove safely and kids did what kids were supposed to be, there wouldn't be any accidents, but obviously, that doesn't happen. Um, but no, I wouldn't encourage, you know, there's steps for a reason. Nate and I do this all the time. He'll get data to me. I will get him crash data. It's analyzed by professionals that are used across the nation. And I- It's analyzed by professionals that are used across the nation, and I would encourage us to use those standards instead of just randomly picking. And I'm sure we can work on looking into that intersection here in the near future.
It, it wouldn't surprise me if that intersection met the data anyway.
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't think it will, but I will gladly pull the numbers.
Nice.
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, my name is Diana Partner, and I live at, uh, five hundred East Wapsenonic Avenue. Uh, I'm here to address the incessant speeding in that area. Um, it's bad enough without the students, but the students are about to come back. And I, today, just today, uh, witnessed, uh, a girl run this, the four-way stop sign at, um, Wapsi and Ivy Side Drive, and she almost got, like, the bus was proceeding through the intersection. So, um, I just, uh, I've had it, the neighbors have had it, uh, they're not stopping at the stop signs. Um, that, that's one issue, they're just blowing through. Um, the speed is, is ridiculous. Um, we've seen so many, not so many accidents, but thankfully, the one that just happened a month ago, um, just the cars were badly damaged, not the people, nobody got, uh, hurt, thankfully. Um, but I, I just don't want to see it come to, you know, somebody getting hurt or killed before something, something happens, because the kids are gonna, the students are gonna be at, at the campus here in the next, what, week or two, and it's gonna, it's gonna get ten times worse. Um, in addition to that, we have, um, I would say teenagers and, and maybe like in the twenties. Um, they have, uh, those, um, electric bikes, I guess, they have like a motor on them. I, I'm not sure exactly if they like build them that way or whatever, but, um, and then we also have motorbikes that I don't believe are street legal, I, I'm not sure. Uh, but they are speeding incessantly through the neighborhood too, and they're just blowing through the stop signs, like, I, I, because I live right on the corner, and I actually have footage. I've recorded, because I, I, we're just fed up, the neighbors are, I'm here on, on behalf of my neighbors, and, uh, we just want some action taken. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comment, we will close the floor and move on to the resolutions. Linda?
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Monday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is awarding a bid for the Margaret Avenue Training Center renovation and improvement project to the following bidders. General Construction to Ventura Construction Services in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Plumbing Construction to Charles D. Riley in the amount of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Electrical Construction to M. H. Electric of Dunkinsville in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Mechanical Construction to Cletus and Sheedy in the amount of eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for a grand total of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars payable from ARPA funds and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item C is awarding the Thirteenth Avenue Stormwater Improvements and Signal Upgrades between Twelfth Street and Thirteenth Street to Coddles Asphalt Maintenance of Everett in the amount of one million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents payable as follows. Stormwater Improvement, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars with ARPA funds. Thirteenth Avenue and Twelfth Street Signals, four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars capital and liquid fuels. Thirteenth Avenue and Thirteenth Street Signals, four hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. GLG grant of that is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. City share, one hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. The grant match, liquid fuels. And mill and pave is thirty-one thousand dollars, two thousand twenty-three capital paving program. Decorative Crosswalks, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars liquid fuels. And further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item D is awarding the Twentieth Avenue to Twenty-third Avenue Drainage Improvements Project to C. H. and D. Enterprises of New Stanton, P. A. in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars payable from ARPA funds and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item E is awarding the two thousand twenty-two Asphalt Joint and Crack Seal Project to Russell Standard Corporation of Fayetteville, Pennsylvania in the amount of forty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars payable from highway aid funds and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is amending and restating Resolution forty-one dash nineteen, which establishes the eligibility criteria for development and redevelopment projects within the city of Altoona and determines the city's financial participation. Item G is approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred dollars submitted by the city of Altoona of thirteen oh one, Twelfth Street for property located at eighteen twenty-one, Eleventh Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item H is approving a repository bid in the amount of one hundred dollars submitted by Kimberly Farone for property located at eighteen thirty-four, Sixth Street and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item I is expressing concern and opposition in encouraging the city of Altoona State and federal legislators to do the same regarding the welfare of residents, pedestrians and motorists and the cost of the city's infrastructure maintenance in relation to proposed federal-state truck size and weight increases, which would place subsidies on local governments, place increased wear and tear on roads and bridges, and threaten the safety of the public. Are there any additions, deletions, or items that need to be pulled for a separate vote?
Linda, I need to abstain from item B.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call for the consent vote. On all items, should I pull item B out then for a separate vote? Would that be the easiest way? Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'm gonna call for the consent vote on all items excluding item B. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper?
Yes.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the consent vote passes seven to zero. And then we will vote on the item B, which is the awarding of the bid for Margaret Avenue Training Center renovation and improvement project for a total, grand total of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars payable from ARPA funds and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper?
Yes.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes is abstaining. Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
Vote passes six to zero. Next, we have an ordinance which is, was on there to be scheduled for introduction, but it's gonna need to be tabled at this time.
I'll move to table.
I have to call a vote or anything? Okay, Councilman Kelly moved to table, item introduction, ordinance introduction labeled one, and I'm gonna call for a vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper?
Yes.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance for adoption, which was introduced by Councilman Ellis. It's an ordinance of the city of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which amends Chapter eight hundred dash six definitions applicable to entire Chapter eight hundred and Chapter eight hundred dash fifty-five central business commercial zone of the city, of the Altoona City Code to provide a definition for corporate housing and to add corporate housing to the list of permitted residential uses for central business commercial zones within the city of Altoona. Is there a motion for adoption?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion for adoption by Vice Mayor Ickes, second by Councilman Ellis, right?
Yep.
I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper?
Yes.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero. The next ordinance for adoption, it was introduced by Vice Mayor Ickes. It's an ordinance of the city of Altoona of Blair, of Blair, Pennsylvania to amend certain provisions of Article three of Chapter ninety-four of the Code of the City of Altoona entitled Non-Uniform Employees Pension Plan. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Ellis, seconded by Councilman Beatty. And I will call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper?
Yes.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Count, Vice Mayor Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero. We have a final ordinance, which was introduced, adopt, introduced by Mayor Pacifico, and it's an ordinance of the city of Altoona amending the Code of the City of Altoona specifically Chapter ninety-eight entitled Personnel Policies and repealing Section ninety-eight dash one of the City Code and replacing with, it with Adoption of City of Altoona Non-Uniform Employees Personnel Policies Manual, two thousand twenty-two. Repeal all other ordinance or parts of laws in conflict therewith. Excuse me. Provide severability of provisions and provide an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
Motion.
Second.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by Vice Mayor Ickes and seconded by Councilman Ellis, and I will call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilman Carper?
Yes.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero.
All right, uh, we'll move on to the city manager updates now. Omar?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. Just a couple of items to talk about in my update. Um, really not anything big or earth-shattering, but our budget preparation is, is well underway. Uh, the finance director and I will be meeting with, uh, department directors in the next week or two uh, to review all the departmental budgets. We're also updating our capital improvement program, which is a five-year, uh, program that we're gonna update annually. Um, what I'm going to tell you is that in the near future, I'm gonna present, uh, at council and maybe in conjunction with the budgeting process. You know, we just, we just finalized collective bargaining with all of our, our unions, and, um, I wanna, wanna kind of bring council up to speed as to what the costs associated with those agreements was so that, so you understand that, um, more, more specifically. And, um, if we have time, I'd really like to put together a five-year projection. And given the fact that we have those bargaining agreements that, that are gonna go out for three or four years now, um, it'll, it'll allow us to put together a five-year projection for the general fund, uh, which in accounting circles and in financial, uh, standards, that's something that is looked for, uh, from every municipality, that you have a five-year projection. So, we're gonna try to put that together here before the end of the year. So, just wanted to tell you that, um, it was, we were financially themed here tonight with the, uh, presentation of the audit and the mid-year financials, so I thought I'd just talk about that a little bit. Um, also, you probably know this, but, uh, I just wanna kind of, uh, let you know officially that the city updated its website, it's, that website is now live. Um, it looks a lot better than it did, and I think it's gonna be a lot, you know, a lot more user-friendly as far as that goes to anybody that wants to access it. And I just wanna thank, uh, staff, the city clerk and the IT, uh, manager and the IT staff for their extensive efforts to put that together. That's all I have.
Thank you, Omar. Uh, we'll move on to council, uh, discussion items. Councilman Kelly?
Mayor, thank you. First, let me, let me start off by apologizing for my, my lateness to you and the members of council. I was, uh, tied up with some, some work commitments and, uh, knew I was gonna be a little bit late, but didn't think I'd be quite that late. So, my apologies to everyone for that. These things sometimes happen, but I would, uh, just to, uh, jump on what Omar was saying, I think that would be great to have some of those projections, because council will have to be the ones that look at, how do we match the revenues up to cover those projected expenditures? And we do have some flexibility, um, under the, under the Home Rule Charter with how we, how we blend those. Uh, let's face it, we're talking about taxes, so we, you know, and that's what we're looking at, is to how we cover the costs of those services that we provide. So, I, I think that we all appreciate your efforts in that regard, uh, so that we can plan and, um, try to make this, uh, as sensible and as responsible as we can. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Carper?
I have nothing additional, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Butterbaugh? Councilman Ickes?
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I just wanna say, nice work on the audit for everyone in the finance departments that worked on that. I think it was a very nice report. Uh, also, wanna point out, I think Nate's done a great job getting these stormwater projects, not only on the board, but getting them moving and, and actually getting bricks and mortar going on that, so that's great stuff. And, uh, perhaps we should talk regarding the, the Garden Heights thing. Uh, I think this would be a perfect opportunity to, to look at doing one of these neighborhood sweep things that we've talked about and, and, uh, with all of the different departments to be part of that, so maybe we can start coordinating that amongst ourselves.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Beatty?
You have no further comments?
Okay, uh, we'll take questions from the media now, Bill.
Thank you. I broke my glasses, and I have new ones, and I can't, I'm having trouble. Um, Nate, can you explain the, um, the nature and the location of the Thirteenth Avenue Stormwater Project?
So, that's the blend of a couple of different projects, Bill. One is the traffic signals at Tom and Joe's, so it'd be Thirteenth Avenue and Twelfth Street. The other one, at the other end, would be the Thirteenth Avenue and Thirteenth Street Signals. There's, that's another project, and then the stormwater would go in between the two. New piping, catch basins, such.
Was, was there flooding in that area before?
Um, there's some, there was just a need to build some new facilities there. There, there aren't any that exist there right now.
Oh, there's not, none there?
No.
And, and what about the, what, what's the nature of the fix for the, between twentieth Avenue and twenty-third? That's where the, twenty-first is Avenue is where, like, between twelfth and thirteenth streets, I think, or eleventh and twelfth, where that flood, um, took out a lot of basement?
Yeah, so we're just, I mean, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, we're just going through the neighborhood and doing just different. we're just going through the neighborhood and doing just different repairs. We're adding capacity to the surface drainage into the combined system. And then also doing some linings and new sidewalk pieces where we're tearing things up at.
But the, the pipes underneath are gonna, essentially the capacity would be the same as it was, I guess?
Yeah, correct. We're adding some access points too, so we can get to those pipes easier.
Oh, thanks. Um, let's see. Any comment on, any comment on the adoption of the corporate housing, um, ordinance?
It'll be really good to get some new housing stock built in the city, some options that will allow for young professionals coming into the area to work, that they have a place to stay.
Okay. And any, wha, what was the takeaway from the audit? If there's any particular one, I guess, that anybody would like to say?
I think we received a clean opinion, which is good. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I guess the biggest, one of the biggest takeaways is that we had a fairly decent year last year. I think that was pointed out. Um, we have a heck of a lot of pension and, uh, post-employment benefit liability that's outstanding, that, that affects the city. Um, and we were able to reduce the, uh, findings within the audit to the lowest level since, uh, certainly since I've been here. And only really two structural findings, uh, that are persistent.
Okay, well, that's, was one of, one of my next questions. What were the two findings? Cause Dan didn't specify.
Segment, uh, you know, segmenting different duties. So the, the fact is that that department has been understaffed.
Meaning the finance department?
Yes. Um, and so we have people doing multiple, you know, the director's doing, uh, more, uh, than she should in, in an ideal world. So that hopefully will change in this year. Um, and then the other one is related to having someone on staff that can produce the type of reports that are required.
You say the type of reports?
Yeah, the, the type of financial reports that the auditor wants to see.
You mean who's like qualified to do that? And another thing that he did not specify, what, what are the liabilities for the pension and the other post-retirement liability?
I don't have that information here, Bill, but I can provide that to you.
Okay. Do you, do you know offhand what the percentage of funding, the pension plans are offhand?
Not offhand, no.
Okay.
I think the number was 57 million.
For the pension?
Unfunded, between the pensions and post-employment healthcare.
Is...
Were you looking for a funding level, Bill? Like a percentage of the pension being fully funded is what you're...
Yeah, I mean, the, the number is good, but...
Yeah, I don't know the, I don't know the, the funding percentage per se.
Right. I, is that a matter, or, is that a matter of concern? And if so, how much of a concern? And what are you gonna do about it, I guess?
Well, I think from, someone who works today and accrues benefit today, in theory, those dollars should be funded today.
Mm-hmm.
Um, obviously with these defined benefit plans, um, particularly in government structure, that has not always been the case. And it not being what's called an ERISA-covered retirement plan allows for that to be the case. We have 20-year-olds that are in these plans. These plans are going to be around a long time. And compared to other municipalities across the country and even compared to some defined benefit plans in the county, all three of our defined benefit plans are in very good shape.
In fairly good shape?
Mm-hmm.
That's relatively, that's rela, speaking relatively though, right?
Sure, I mean municipal plans across the country are, are drastically underfunded, generally speaking. Ours are in pretty, pretty decent shape.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, I, I guess this is for, I'm not sure who this for. But the, um, what's the nature of the, the repairs that are gonna be going on on Margaret Avenue? Maybe Tim, huh? Or Nate? The, the Margaret Avenue Training Facility?
Yes, turn the rest of the Margaret Avenue facility into a large group instruction for city and/or host other municipalities to use it.
You mean to, to rent it out to other municipalities?
Well, or, or a mutual benefit, I guess, yeah.
And any comments on, well, actually, Dave, um, I heard you making comments on the Garden Heights, but I couldn't understand what you were saying. Um, but...
The, the mayor and I traveled up to Pittston last year, and we actually had those folks come down here. And one of the things that they do up there is they do a neighborhood sweep with all of their city departments in a, to, in a positive type light. And we've had some informal discussions about doing that here. And I, I think this might be an ideal place to start that.
For all the different issues that the, um, the resident raised?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments in particular on any of those issues? There's four of them, I guess, you raised.
Um, we're gonna look into them.
I'm, I'm not sure, Bill, that any of the department heads are even aware that these were issues until these people came in here. So in fairness to the department heads, I think we have to let that be checked out first.
I mean, if someone brings a residential concern to council or any of the department heads, I mean, our job's to try to straighten it out. So, I mean, it's going to be reviewed and hopefully coordinated correctly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And hopefully coordinated correctly.
Thank you.
And the way the new website's set up, it makes it a, a little easier to figure out, okay, who do I need to get in touch with department-wise and to file different concerns?
Mm-hmm. Um, sorry. Oh, any comments on the, on the four-way st... Oh, yeah, I know. I'm sorry, can't read. Um, Nate, the four-way stop issue, you, you said, did you say, cause I couldn't hear you, that, that you do need a study for that?
Yeah, anytime you change anything in traffic, you need to do a study. And as such, there are certain wa, warrants that need to be met legally and so something different than what's there. So, it has to do with traffic volume, different, the major, minor intersections, direction of traffic and, well, other things.
Okay, like speed limits too, I guess, right?
Yeah, yeah, and sometimes.
Okay. And why was the city, or why, why did council table the ordinance? Uh, introduction for the, for ordinance number one?
So we were originally gonna transfer, uh, city properties to the Redevelopment Authority for their disposition. However, whenever we, uh, investigated the, the nature of some of those properties, uh, we had some, some further questions about the status of easements and such. So we need to resolve that before we bring it back to council.
Okay. And what, if any, newsworthy significance were the last two ordinances? The non-uniform pension changes? Were, um, were they, were they just housekeeping matters or...?
No, so the non-uniform pension, uh, is a, uh, it provides a spousal benefit for members of that pension plan. Um, it's available to the other two pension plans and has been for a long time. Uh, but just finalizes the, uh, availability of that benefit uh, for members of that, participants in that plan.
Oh, okay. Just like making them all equal that way?
In a sense, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Meeting is adjourned.